...the board audit committee to order. We're going to start with our results of the annual comprehensive financial audits. So Chief Delia, do you want to introduce this item and introduce our guests?
Yeah, sure, thanks. So good evening, afternoon. And so I'm excited to present the annual comprehensive review, our annual audit. So every year we go through this process to help showcase our financials in transparency and in addition to our numbers, how do they reconcile what's going on there? And so to share the results, I'd like to introduce Tim Gillett from TKW, which I have not memorized the acronym breakdown, but I'm sure you could do that. And so I'll turn it over to Tim.
Great, thanks, Alberto. I hope everybody can hear me through the mask. It's Talbot, Corbola, and Warwick, if you want to know. But everybody just says TKW, even we just say TKW. Thanks again. It's great to be here. It's great to be here in person after virtual last year, I think. I'm here to present the audit results for the annual comprehensive financial report, which is this document right here. I assume you all have a copy somewhere or access to a copy.
Thank you.
That's good. That's a good thing.
As does the public.
Great. It is a huge document. I mean, I think it was 130-some numbered pages. Most of the credit for that goes to Tracy and your accounting finance staff here. There's really only a very small part of this that is mine, the auditors. And I will go over my parts of it. I'll try and go reasonably quickly. But anytime you got questions, happy to take those. So just interrupt me whenever and ask whatever. So my part actually starts on, it's a numbered page 13, although it's probably 20 pages in. The independent auditor's report. The short version is it's a good report. It's the clean, unmodified audit opinion. The longer version is, you know, we go through what we do, management's responsibility, our responsibility, and then on the top of the second page gets into our opinion, which is kind of the official part you really want from us, where we say the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the district and so forth. So then it goes into the degree of responsibility we take for other pieces of this giant report. There's required supplementary information, and certain parts of that we don't express an opinion on, like the management's discussion and analysis. And mainly the pension and OPEB, OPEB is Other Post Employment Benefits, schedules that are in the required supplementary information, RSI. Then there's some other RSI, mainly budgetary comparison information, which is covered in the next paragraph, where we say that's, we believe that's fairly presented in relation to the basic financial statements. Then there is also other supplementary information, OSI, which also we say is fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements. And then there are some pieces, the introductory and the statistical sections, that we don't provide any assurance of at all. So that's all normal standard, pretty much what you've had every year since I've been involved with PPS, which is a while now.
However, every year we have not had a clean audit. Recently we have, but you don't take it for granted.
You should not take it for granted. There can always be things. And actually, there are a couple of small things I will talk about later on that are not part of the financial statements, but do show up in some of my stuff. So the third part, or third page, the last part of my report is we talk about government auditing standards, and it's really just a reference to another report that is in a separate document, and we will get to that later. And then finally, other reporting required by the state of Oregon. They ask us to look at certain things, and we have to report on that. So it's just alerts you to the fact that there is that other report. The following, my report that I just talked about, is management's discussion and analysis. Starts on page number 17. Those of you who have sat with me before know, I always encourage everybody to read that, that part of the report, even if you're not going to read all 130-whatever pages of the annual comprehensive financial report. You should read the MDNA. It provides a good overview of things. It provides some comparative information, which the basic financials don't have, and really helps you understand what's gone on the last year and what's in the more detailed stuff in the financial statements themselves. Following the MDNA, we get into the basic financial statements themselves, the state of the net position and the fund statements. Not really going to talk about those because I've already given you my opinion that they're fairly same. Those are followed by the notes to the financial statements, which are lots more detailed information. If you want more information about what's in the numbers in those statements, you know, read through the footnotes. Most of those are similar to prior years. I don't think there's anything wildly different that we need to talk about tonight. I was going to actually just point out one thing, which you all know already, that you issued $399 million of credit pension obligation bonds that happened after the end of the year. So actually took your first contribution rates down to zero, which is kind of a nice thing. Kind of a different subsequent event, let's say. And then there's all the other supplemental information. Next part that really is any part of mine goes all the way back to page 130. This is that report under Oregon state regulations that the state asked us to do. You can see the bullet points there, the different types of things they ask us to look at, the positive public funds, indebtedness limitations, et cetera. And if we found any issues in the opinion of that. And that is where I do have something to report. It's really just for this OMS report. And you'll see it on my 130, page 131. In our test sample, we looked at 60 students. We're looking for more than 10 absences. And we found two students that had 10 or more consecutive absences that were not withdrawn from ADM in an appropriate fashion. So that's, that can be a problem.
And is that just, is that just one of many factors that you looked at in a test case to look at? Or how did you arrive at that particular metric?
Well, the state asked us to look at a couple of things. In addition to all these bullet point things, we do look at ADM, and we look at teacher experience, those two things. For the ADM, we do pull a sample. Obviously, there are many, many, many more students than 60. But 60 is a representative sample. And we did find these two instances. Now, it's happened before here. It's happened with other school districts that I do. I won't say it's, I mean, it's not nothing, but it's not a huge deal either. I mean, it's very challenging. And I think part of the issue here, I think, is some of the, some of the schools set their own calendars. So it becomes a manual process, where there's manual involvement in doing that withdrawal. So mistakes can happen. We happen to find a couple.
And what is the dynamic in the reporting process between the district and the state on these issues like this? So this secondary report here, you have found something material.
The state gets a copy of, you know, the entire thing, entire 131 pages. There is also something referred to as the summary of revenues and expenditures. And on that, it's marked if we found any issues that are reported. So the state will know there have been a couple of things reported.
I was just, I was nonverbal with Janice because that's potentially an interesting thing for us to consider as an internal audit. You know, enrollment rules, essentials, ADM.
Yeah. Yes, that would be a good thing to look at.
Can you remind me, I guess, your students? I seem to remember this was an issue in last year's CAFR as well.
Actually, I don't remember if it was last year or not. But it's not unusual for it to come up.
That was my second question was, sort of, sort of, what do we find? And I don't know if you do other school districts, state, what do we find in districts? I mean, 2 out of 60 seems like a low number, but if everyone else is at zero, then it's not. If everyone else is at, you know, error rates of 10 or 15%, then we're doing great, right? So I'm just curious as a benchmark.
I would say this falls within the normal range. I wouldn't say it's way out of line, but it's also not zero. But I don't see a whole lot of people with zero. But again, we do, you know, on a test basis, we audit a number of school districts. It's not unusual for there to be some issues with ADM. Usually the sample size is around 60, because that's 95% confidence and blah, blah, blah. One or two is not wildly out of line.
Thank you.
Also then, the next thing is teacher experience. Again, where we take a sample of 60. And again, this is one that does come up every year. And this one probably comes up in every school district I do. For whatever reason, it's a hard thing to get a handle on. And I know, I know PPS did kind of a major project on this. I don't remember how many years ago that was, like four or five years ago.
Same star, I like trying.
Tried to make sure everything was squared away, and yet couldn't provide us experienced documentation for four teachers and found two teachers where the experience was misreported. Out of the sample of 60.
What am I missing about why this is an important metric for the state relative to financial reports?
The state reimburses you partially based on teacher experience.
Oh, okay.
So teacher experience is, that's, it's one of the inputs.
And it's the difference between districts' experience against the average of the, or the average district. And so it ends up being a factor in the calculation that then helps determine revenue.
Right. And same thing with the ADM, essentially.
Yep, right.
There was an instance, I remember again, it's probably been four or five years ago, of a school district was found to be intentionally misreporting their ADM here in Oregon. I forget which district it was, but they.
Not taking kids off the rolls. So inflating them in the first place.
Probably more than that. It inflated them in the first place just to get a larger share of the state's school. So again, I wouldn't say either of these is a huge thing for Portland Public, but they're things to be aware of and to watch and try to improve.
In like along those lines, Tim, would this be characterized, just to be clear, would it be characterized as a material weakness?
No, no. If it was a material weakness, there would be a whole nother form of reporting that would happen.
Even though this is, is this a separate report or this is like a subset of the overall?
Well, it's a separate report, but it does get bound up in the whole ACFR. So that is at the very back.
And Alberto, do you want to tell us anything about how your team responds or has responded to these couple of little findings, we'll call them, since they're not material?
Yeah, so we just wrapped up last week. And so it's eventually surfacing and having these conversations with some of the other team members as well. And being able to just gauge, I forgot the technical term, but essentially like the amount of effort, depending on like, if it's a small number, what's the sort of level of effort to try to correct? Would it just outweigh the effort to correct some of these minor situations or minor miscalculations? But it's still worth a conversation, which we would then have with like our instructional team, with HR, because attendance happens at the school sites. And then eventually that gets into the system, and then eventually that gets imported to the state. So there's like this through line in assessing. But we would start with just creating awareness, making sure, hey, we reviewed the audit. And so now like we want to share some of these results and be able to then have a structured conversation of what sort of problem solving could we then do?
I just looked at last year's report, and it was the same two things. We pulled a different number of instances, not quite said the same two. Anybody have any questions? Director Scott, Director Hollins, Director Brim Edwards? I have one question, which, you know, talk about at the beginning, these special revenue funds. And just your opinion on, Alberto knows this is like one of my favorite topics. Your opinion on how those are represented in the budget in terms of their sort of the ease of access to that information and disaggregating those funds and expenditures from the rest of the budget. Do you feel like it's easy to understand? Do you feel like it's represented in a transparent way? Do you feel like it's worth talking about?
Well, actually, I would say I am not a budget expert.
You're compliant, too.
So I have a financial reporting and compliance. Yes, we have to look at certain processes with the budget and how it happened. Actually, I just had a report earlier today on somebody who didn't, you know, post their notice for a supplemental budget in the way they were supposed to and stuff. So it's kind of things like that. But as far as how you go about the budget process, really not my area of expertise. Sorry.
No, it's all right. It's just that we talked about it in the introduction, which is interesting and strange.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also thinking about the distinction. One of the big goals of the audit is around accuracy in reporting information. And so being transparent, but then being clear. And then being clear depends on who you're talking to, right? And so the clarity behind transparency, I think, is where it can like, it's perspective, whether it's like, it may be clear to another CPA or to an accountant, but to the third grade mom, maybe not. So I think that's where it's the opportunity to explore that.
Anything else you want to share with us for the good of the order?
Well, yes, I have a whole nother, it's a single audit we haven't talked about yet.
Okay.
Should talk about that.
Yeah.
That's very important, the single audit. For anybody who doesn't know, you are required to get a single audit if you expend over $750,000 in federal funds. Obviously, Portland Public does do that. So you have a single audit. There are a bunch of very specific ones from the federal government about how we should audit that, selecting certain programs, how it's classified. A programs versus B programs, and high risk versus low risk, and so forth. And then there are certain compliance requirements that we have to look at for each of those things. So this is, this smaller document that you published separately is the report on the results of that, the single audit. This one, more of it is mine, but still your document. There are two reports that I do in the front. They're actually numbered page, page one, and one, two, and three, four. They look similar. They actually focus on two different things. Kind of the first one is more on financial reporting. The second one is more on compliance. They do kind of overlap. The good part is that they're both, you know, unmodified, clean opinions. Everything was good. There's no compliance findings to report, no question costs. The second one also includes our report on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, the SEFA, so called. Again, fairly presented, no findings to report. Then those reports are actually followed by the SEFA itself. It shows, you know, all of the different programs, the federal programs where PPS expended money. Their grant over what, $66 million in federal funds expended.
So we have our first, so this fiscal year included our first tranche of ESSER funds, right?
Yep, I was going to say, share that. As an example, you have title funding, you have your ESSER dollars, your IDA grants, and some other patients. That's like the purpose of this single audit.
Then this has, but this is, this, that fiscal year included that, the beginning of pandemic relief funds.
Yes.
And then next year, we have even more discrete funds like FCC and all those, right? It's getting caught.
The FCC, sorry, FCC funds?
Technology?
Oh. Yeah.
Just a lot, just more, more different discrete lots of federal money.
And on page, I believe, page eight, has some details regarding our ESSER expenditures. Yeah, yes.
Here are ESSER.
Yeah.
Kind of in the middle there.
Yeah. Yeah. See that different, the different sources of federal money and uses.
What does ESSER stand for? Or what does it mean?
Elementary, oh, sorry.
No, go for it.
Elementary and secondary school emergency.
So.
Pandemic.
The pandemic relief code stimulus funding, yeah.
Part of the American Rescue Act.
Yep, that, the American Rescue Act, essentially a third round, either three rounds. And we're using this information now to like, to reconcile as we continue to update our ESSER reports. So this is helpful as we get to this point and we continue to work through the fundamentals of it.
Yeah. I mean, it just kind of underscores the importance of this audit because as things get more complex and.
Right, but we'll say there are a lot of federal programs out there. Last year, I don't think, I don't think we delayed your report, but I know I have some other governmental agencies where we had to delay their report because the rules were changing all the way up. I think the OFU issued the rules in December last year, some of the compliance requirements. And actually, this year, I was just telling Janice and some of the folks earlier, I've got another client that was about to issue their report, and they have funding under a program. There was just a compliance agenda issued on Friday with new rules that changed how we're looking at one of their larger programs. And to kind of halt the presses and go back and re-audits things under different requirements. And there is another agenda expected, you know, agenda two this year or so, which isn't out yet. I'm not sure when that's coming. So yes, this whole thing is complicated and lots of rules and very, very fluid situation. So far, so good for these three folks.
All right. Anything you want to add, or?
Well, I mean, it's fourth year in a row, so it's a huge deal. And Tracy Pender couldn't be here today. She's watching and not feeling well, so we're sending her good vibes. But Tracy Pender's done an amazing job, her team, Cheryl Einzalone, Ashley Fink, Melissa on budgeting, and obviously a variety of different folks that have come together to put this document together. There's a lot that goes into it, a lot of long nights, a lot of frustrating conversations and meeting deadlines. But a huge shout out to the team. I really just want to extend my gratitude to them for this amazing work.
Yeah, give them our appreciation.
Yes, I would like to do that as well. I mean, we couldn't do it without Tracy and Cheryl and the whole team. And they really do do a very good job. Very happy to have PPS as a point.
Thank you very much.
My only question next, I would echo everything you said. It's a tremendous accomplishment, you know, it's just, it's particularly four years in a row, but you can't do much better than this audit finding, so I appreciate that. What next steps? Does this go to the board for acceptance?
For, yes, to accept, not adopt. Roseanne, when is that scheduled? This week.
Are we doing a presentation there as well or no? Is this sort of the presentation at the committee?
So Tim does another like refer, usually it's a refer, right? This is more an opportunity to dig a little deeper. But on Tuesday, since there is a presentation, but then the.
The highlights.
Bylining, yeah, yeah, then it goes to the vote.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thanks very much. Good to see everyone in person this year.
Thank you, too.
I will, I will see most of you again on TV. Before I forget, you know, we work a lot, which management, but we actually work for the district, so for the audit committee. Anybody, do you ever have any questions or anything? Please don't hesitate to contact me directly or Jason Ramney, our senior manager on the job, or explosive of all the staff out here. Happy to answer questions.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. See you Tuesday.
Four years in a row. Okay. Now, so Janice and Mary, tell us what you've been up to. Tell us about your progress, please.
Okay, I want to share mine.
Yeah, sure, 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 sure.
Because you guys will talk about this other subject.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I pulled up the audit status update, and I printed it for those of you that are here. Hopefully, Director Hollins and Brim Edwards, you guys can see that open. So just quickly to give you an update on where we are on the current status of audits. The ACH audit is done. I was hoping to have the report for you guys today, but it will just be a little bit later this month. The hardship transfers audit is the current audit we're working on, we're working on planning. And one thing that I have heard from Director Thompson is that you guys want input on the SCOPING. So I will be preparing SCOPING memo to request feedback and input on that. And you guys will be getting that sooner rather than later, because I'm in the planning right now. But as we get closer, there will be an opportunity for you to give me that info. Now I'm going to start doing SCOPING memos that's moving forward to make sure I get back, get back. The next following the hardship transfers audit will be the student body activity funds audit. So that's what is already currently going to approve, and that's what we're working on right now. Other activity update, tonight we will be talking about an audit plan proposal. So we will discuss that next. I also want to let you know that the OIPA audit survey is done. And so you guys should have gotten a test run of it, the board directors, in your email. So you can look and see what that survey looks like, fill it out, and practice knowing what results look like. But also, I sent it as a test run to you guys, so you can give me feedback on some of the questions. If you have questions, I'll let you know. Just want to get feedback before I deploy it, but it's been in the works for a while, and it's ready, so I'm excited.
Hey, everybody, look for that. I myself included it. I'm not going to turn it out.
And we don't know who returns it because it's intended to be anonymous. So I think we got. And we don't know who returns it because it's independent of the anonymous, so I think we got one response, but we don't know who.
Yes, definitely, so good.
Okay, okay, but I just wanted to make sure this was my first time to say about, I want to make sure I didn't lie. So that's up and coming, um, the one other topic I wanted to address with you guys is compliance with auditing standards. So auditing standards, GAGAS generally accepted auditing, I think it's generally accepted.
Government auditing standards.
So, uh, we need to have a peer review every three years. So, um, I've now completed my second year, because we're in the beginning of the third year and so I reached out to the ALTA peer review team and, um, there's a little bit more flexibility in doing your first peer review. So we're not required to have one this year, we'll hopefully be two years out. So I will keep communicating as I learn more about it, but one thing that I did learn is that until we have our first review, we need to have a modified statement in our audit report, so.
So, so basically, we're, we're taking a pass this year, we're not doing a peer review, but the GAGAS standards, uh, include that as a necessary component, so we just have to say in each of our audits
Right.
um, that we, uh, are not, did not comply with this one aspect of those standards and this is why.
Yes. Yes. You explained it very well. So I put a copy of what the modified statement will be in here down at the bottom, the modified statement. Um, so you'll see this in our audit reports, I wanted to make sure and be very transparent about, um, why this modified statement is in there moving forward. And to be honest, it shouldn't have been in the other ones, but it will be in there moving forward until we have our first peer review. Um, are there any questions about that?
Andrew, do you have any experience with external peer review for auditing or do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, I know it's part of the standards and, yeah, I mean, so, and I missed what you said in terms of when are we planning?
It will probably be two, at least two more years before it's really necessary and, um, also, the, I pulled up a couple of examples of other auditors, so the Washington County Auditor's Office has this exact same disclosure in their, um, audit reports. And if you think back to a really long time ago when the district had and had not audited previously, their report had the same disclosure. So it's not uncommon and so I will be moving forward, but I.
We're just being hardy whatsoever.
That would be.
Awesome, thank you, you take that. It's complicated, compliance with standards, I want to make sure and be transparent about it. And so that is all that I have for the update, uh, do you want to move directly to the audit plan discussion?
Yep, so we will, uh, so we will bring the ACH report to the board just after the first year.
I'll be in touch with the.
Yeah. Um, it'd be nice to just push that out the door as quickly as we can. Um, and then our other to do that we need to look for is a scoping memo on the hardship transfer so that we can get any input and, um, make sure that's also, well, I don't know, there, there probably doesn't fit our timeline in terms of our next audit committee maybe, right, you need feedback before that, so it'd just be by email.
I will email it to you each individually because can't respond altogether, so individually and we can respond.
Okay.
So I'm also available for phone calls, if you get my email, you're like, hey, this is my child, call me, we can just quickly chat and I'll think notes of what your thoughts are. All right, so let's talk about the, uh, an audit plan proposal. I printed a copy of the PPS internal performance auditing policy and a copy of our charter. And I emailed them just before the meeting to Director Ben Edwards and Director Holland, so they should be fresh in your email in case you want to refresh your memory. I thought it might be a good idea to have these two things that are highlighted to kind of ground our thoughts about what we're selecting, what's the authority of the office, do you do audits? What type of audits are we allowed to do, so I highlighted each of those sections in those two documents in case you find them invaluable.
That is helpful, all right.
So let's talk about the proposal summary.
So before we go into the content there, so we've already approved two that are on deck. Um, so realistically for next year, do you think you have the capacity for two more?
So, well, in the policy, it says at the beginning of the fiscal year, fiscal year, we're supposed to use a audit plan proposal. So we are a little bit off cycle, but last year we were presenting the same thing in December. And so if you would like for us to get on cycle, then I would recommend to approve one. And then we can come back at the beginning, you know, early summer. My thought behind, um, that's my, my preference is to do it in the fall or early winter because when we board members come in, if I have to do the plan before fiscal year, I won't get info from you. So my preference is to get info of the summer and present options in the fall, but it's up to you, so.
Which would be on track with what we're supposed to be doing staff for fiscal year, so. Right, sure, I mean, how do you guys feel about that, just approve one and then revisit in, uh, late summer? Makes sense, might as well.
We want to talk about it, so if you find that you just love two, we can also do two, totally fine, we just keep working on them until we're ready for more and then we'll ask you to approve more. So the first one, I, I color coded these to give you an idea of what you can pick tonight. So if you pick from the ready category, then we can pick them tonight and present them to the board for people. If you would like an audit.
So, I guess just before we go back, um, I just wanted to thank Janice for reaching out to everybody on the board. I think you did end up with speaking with everyone, right? To, uh, to solicit ideas for prospective audits and thanks for organizing them. Tell us when we're good to go, Terry.
Just one moment.
We don't want anybody to miss this exciting stuff, this is the best part.
Well, I mean, it's a great resource, we want to use it well. I mean, something, there really are an infinite number of perspectives.
Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem at all, okay.
All right, so the first audit option is an EASL audit. Um, this was proposed last year and considered and we passed on it last year. Um, and said we chose to do the hardship transfers audit, so we are proposing it again this, uh, this year for consideration for approval. I could speak with, um, Dr. Proctor just actually a few minutes ago and she said she would fully support this audit. I've also spoke to the ESL staff, um, to them and they also would be very supportive of the audit. So that's really good news, I'd love to hear people be like, yeah, we would appreciate that, so that's good. Um, the scope of the audit is the same as previously proposed, it's very high level of the scope that I'm proposing. Um, and once we do planning, I'm going to start doing the scoping memos and be very clear and precise about what the objectives are, so you guys will be able to weigh in on that. So again, it's very high level, but, um, the scope is, um, the second page, one more. There you go. So very high level, um, same as we had last year. So that's just for the ESL consideration, okay. The next audit for consideration is, um, the allocation of student investment app funds to community-based organizations. And this is why I hope you stay in Alberto because, um, certainly would take your input here. Um, most of you already know that this has been an issue that's come up in the Charter and Alternative School Committee. And, um, I participated or I listened in, in a conversation recently, um, with Alberto, um, Director Green and a couple of other PPS staff and two CBO members and, uh, to kind of see where, where things were. And at the end of that conversation, I still feel like I don't quite understand how the, like, what happened, how it happened and what would be the, um, if there, is there any compliance requirements that says we have to do it one way or the other? So I, I still don't feel like we have evidence to support a, um, moving forward in one way or the other. And you don't need to have, you don't necessarily have to have evidence to support your decisions on how to move forward on this, but I do think it would be of value to have an auditor take a look and, um, go through it. One of the things that I found a little, um, interesting is in the conversation, one of the CBOs really wanted to know how this happened, not just moving forward, how do we fix it?
So for those of you who were part of these conversations in the Charter and Alternative Committee meeting, what we're talking about is just was a misunderstanding about, um, allocation of SIA funds to our community-based alternative programs, a misunderstanding between how, uh, the, how it was represented in the budget, which created an expectation on their part and then what eventually, um, was different about what their allocations were. And so, I mean, I think regardless of an audit or no audit, having had that experience had created a lot of, um, sort of much deeper understanding for the importance of clarity in the budget um, around, uh, how those programs are treated and that they are treated equitably, not just amongst themselves, but, um, relative to our own district-based programs, so the notion being, our values should be that we're agnostic about the setting in which the student is being served. Um, they, they deserve access to the same resources, the same piece of the SIA pie and, um, there was some question as to whether that was the case, so, uh, I, I don't know if you want to speak to sort of.
I have one more comment before I drop it, because I said I would say this, so in this conversation, Director Green was very clear and concise and one of the things that he said, and I asked for permission to say this, he's on here. Um, you know, that he's wondering, did the district make a mistake? Do we owe this money or is there just a misunderstanding? So at the end of the conversation, I asked him, is that question answered? He feels like he has a full understanding of the issue and so he does not think that an audit would, um, add value. I, um, so I'm giving you his thoughts, I personally disagree, but that's okay, I'm just communicating. But now you're.
Yeah, so I think that, uh, we, we've had several conversations about this and, uh, thinking about, um, you know, if, if, if the committee wishes to, to, to audit, you know, that's, of course, we would welcome that to have that conversation um, and, and to be able to show like, okay, where could we have done a better job in communicating? Because that was essentially, you know, one of the, at the crux of, of the issue was like, okay, we could have done a better job, we could have done a better job of explaining this information. And, and so like, how do we learn from that to help improve systems, well, internal and external? So, uh, I think that as far as like, hey, you know, if I'm an external entity, I, it's, it's, you know, how do I then, uh, manage my expectations with having a check in hand versus making assumptions? Uh, but then simultaneously, how are we then also managing those conversations in a good faith partnership to, to manage that? And, and so like, there's like the communication perspective and then there's like the math perspective. And I think that's where we did spend a good amount of time in showing how we've historically kept, been consistent and how we've calculated that funding stream, uh, which has been through A M W, which state does it, then they pass it on to us and then we then in turn use the same formula to distribute the funding. So I, I think that, looking at it from that perspective, I, I would appreciate, uh, Dr. Green's, uh, opinion of like, we don't need an audit. Uh, but ultimately, at the same time, it's, if, if we, the, the committee wanted to do an audit, we can certainly support that and, and, and follow through with that.
So I have one kind of follow-up thought, if the district is just wanting to make a decision to move forward, he's presented options and the calculations to the charter, so he has, I reviewed his slides and there's, um, there's a lot of how to, you know, what are the different options to move forward, given the circumstance, what are we going to do? If it is the will of the board just to move forward, that's what I heard from the conversation is that CBOs are interested in figuring out how this could have happened to them, why did it happen? And in that situation, I think having an, an auditor look at that because motions on both sides, nobody, you know, very independent, I have no, you know, no horse in the race or something like that.
No dog, right.
Yeah, there you go, so, um, so I think that would be very helpful to maintain the trust and integrity of the situation if you wanted to look back and say, how did this happen? If you just want to move forward, absolutely agree. No audit would.
I, I think, and, and so I, I come to this very limited knowledge of the specifics of the issue, I saw a couple emails, kind of skimmed them, but I just didn't focus in, I wasn't, you know, on that committee. But I have not heard yet anyone say that, that what happened was not consistent with the policy decision of the board and, you know, superintendent and consistent with state law. And, and those are the things that, that if I were hearing that that was happening, I'd say, oh, you know what, we should go back. How, how does that happen? What I am hearing is that our CBOs read a number in the budget that they thought was theirs and that it wasn't. Um, and, and, and I'm, I'm nervous, I'll be, and I told you, this is what we talked, I mean, I am nervous about an audit, if the audit is really just of a policy decision that, and I'm going to be really blunt here, our politically connected CBOs don't agree with. And what I get nervous about is using you as our independent auditor to sort of go in and investigate something that really at its heart is just they want more money, they want to convince us they want more money and they're angry because they thought they were going to get it because they misread a budget document. Now, does that mean we can't make our budget document clear, more transparent, more aligned? Absolutely it does, but I come back to what you said, I mean, reading something in a, in a budget document and then making operational decisions on it as a CBO, that's the CBO's responsibility and they need to be held accountable. And I kind of wonder would our audit actually potentially go there and, and it gets a little bit, because you're auditing the district, you're not auditing the CBO. But I'm kind of wondering, just given my limited knowledge of this, if in reality the findings maybe should be, the CBO should have been a little more careful and should have clarified with the district how much money they were going to get.
My perspective is serving on that committee and, uh, having these conversations on that, you know, um, that there, there, there's, uh, responsibility on both sides in terms of, uh, lack of clarity and assumptions that were made. That being said, I, I am not concerned moving forward that we're going to run into a similar situation. I think, you know, we have had so much dialogue about this issue, we will engage them in the budget process so that it's just as we do other constituencies, uh, so that it's really clear, you know, how they're being treated relative to other pieces of the pie in terms of those allocations, so. I hear what you're saying, but, um, I, I don't, I don't think there's a, a systemic issue here that we need to be concerned about. And I also, I think Alberto's been more than responsive, um, to their concerns and it means a lot to me that, uh, Director Green, um, feels like he's, he's square with the issue, yeah? Uh, as the, as the chair of that, so, um, I'm not hearing an appetite for that.
No problem, moving on.
Yeah.
Um, the next one is CPE offerings. So this would be an audit to determine whether or not CPE offerings are accessible across the district, um, for all students. So regardless of high school, year. So regardless of what high school you're in, are there CTE offerings provided at each school? Or is access to CTE offerings provided for all students? This one is, I have my favorite one right now because the board has a goal directly related to post-secondary educators. And I, the second page of this little packet has the scope of what a potential CTE. This is a very high-level objective, but it does say that you have a board goal, it kind of lists what the goal is. You know, whether or not the district is providing equitable access to CTE program offerings throughout the district could impact the district's ability to achieve the board goal. But I did listen in on your work session and it sounds, but that, so I could change my document. But it sounds like we may have already achieved that, so if.
I think that this, I think Gary may have brought this up again, is that right? But this this topic has been around for a while. And I will tell you that we have made just quantum leap in improving our CTE programming and the equity of access for CTE programming. And so, I mean, I don't think this is the highest and best use of our auditing function. I do think it could be a great board work session since it is related to one of our board goals to just go over that, review that, make sure that there aren't glitches in in access. Because we we now have, like Aurora has a comprehensive like clearinghouse of every single program in every single school, number of students enrolled, disaggregated by race, what the outcomes are in terms of certification and pathway, I mean, it's pretty good.
I agree with you, Amy, that we've made substantial progress in getting programs more widely accessible. I was wondering if there's any consideration here or any possible way that we could work in, you know, if this is going to be proceeded with or if a different, I'm sure, curriculum-based one, the actual satisfaction with the programs themselves and sort of the quality in the curriculum of of the CTE programs themselves. I mean, a lot of it, in my personal experience at Benson, has been sort of unavoidable. We moved buildings, there have been constraints around that, things that are way outside of Mr. Wilson's reach, way outside of the district's reach even. But, you know, sort of the satisfaction, the quality of the programs themselves, there's been, you know, we haven't had a shot until last week. So that was a concern, but it wasn't anything that anyone really too much about. But I was just wondering if in other programs, that might be something to look into is the satisfaction of the curriculum that's being taught in the CTE programs? And more specifically, just whether they exist out there or not?
I agree. I think it'd be interesting to look at the, because I take compliance CTE courses and some of them are great, some of them aren't. And like, why were those ones bad? Why were those ones good? I toured our new Lincoln a couple of weeks ago and saw the spaces for like the workshop class, some of the studios, and it's incredible. Like someone said, there was an audio engineering class and they might have a whole lot like radio station from the school. And it'd be incredible. And so I think it would be interesting to look at those classes, see if Lincoln has versus other schools and the accessibility and the.
Gary.
Oh, yeah, and I I agree with, I don't know if there's a student speaking or not because I can't see, I'm on my phone. But I I have, I have not spoken with the head of the CTE program and I have, I probably set up something to meet with her. But we're looking at, and I and I love that we're making leaps and bounds. And that was one of the things that they touted, I think it was yesterday or therefore yesterday. You know, when we got that dismal report as far as academic achievement piece. But I I do, I would really like to see the the equitable CTE courses offered at different schools. So when I was looking for, and this is just recently in the last couple of years, when we was looking at the course offerings for schools versus like, say, like Lincoln and Benson or Lincoln and Jeff or Roosevelt and Jeff or some of them, they were, it it looked to me from the course offerings that the was I was on the district's site as far as the course offerings. It was, they were straight, there was far, there was. It didn't seem equitable, right? Are they not a state equitable? They didn't really seem that every school had some of the basic stuff that I that I would deem could be happen at each school. So for instance, one school had business entrepreneurship course and four other schools didn't. And so I would really like to see or find out, like that that could be a conversation with the CTE lady or that could be through the audit of those. Because if this is something that we're touting and this is one of the bright spots that we have, I want to build on that. I want to make sure that we're building on that and we're not just saying, okay, we we're here in our in our numbers, but actually build on it, make it better, make it efficient. There are some stuff in there that with CTE and it's talk about like, we're talking about like financial literacy piece that could be integrated, integrated with CTE. That's not, that's not in there, you know, when we were talking about construction. Well, we're talking about construction is things in there like, well, how do you build a house? How do you get financing for a house? Would, you know, learn about interest rates, things like that. I would want to do a deeper dive because I think those things are really crucial and especially to a lot of our students to be adult-ready when they when they leave high school.
Gary, Amy, what do you think about a board work session tied to our board goal? And that would give us an opportunity to hear, look at what's going on. And then me, what I what I feel is leave this on here, don't commit to a CTE audit now. Have the board engage with Aurora and her team on what's going on. See if we think, you know, an audit would be helpful after that point. But it's exactly how we should be using our time, digging into the strategies that are supporting our board goals.
Yeah, no, I have no justice to that.
Can you make a note of that, Roseanne, please?
I'll add, I think it would be interesting to look at the CTE classes that focus on financial literacy as opposed to CTE classes, like I'm taking construction management right now. And that has nothing to do with financial literacy. And I think that it's such a big part of our world today. And it'd be interesting to see statistics of how many students are taking classes that teach financial literacy skills.
Yeah.
And really preparing them for the real world.
The other piece, we're getting a little far afield, but the other piece that's really interesting to me there is just certifications. Like we offer a lot fewer certifications that our students leave with than a lot of other school districts. And that's that's hugely important for kids, so just to kind of look at that. So, okay.
So one other point for consideration is I did say to Aurora and just today, and she said that she welcomed an audit of this and also Dr. Conter said the same, she would be welcoming an audit of ESL or CTE or both, she said. So that, but one of the things Aurora mentioned is like several, she said about five years ago, we had seven programs offered this, and now we have sixty-five. So depending on how many years ago Director Holmes was looking, you know, it may not necessarily have been there, but within the last five years, there's just been so much growth. Just that's why I want.
Director, at this juncture, I think a board work session is a great start. I'm, I would be in favor of an audit, but, you know, I'll, I might edit my statement after I listen to a board work session.
Okay, let's, I want to be mindful of our time and go through. Dr. Ruben, the words are in my hand, right? Oh, I'm sorry. Juliette, did you have something you wanted to add? I couldn't tell. Juliette, are you there?
She's on mute. Oh, no.
Is she on the panel? Oh, sorry, she's on.
She was, she must have.
Juliette, are you there?
I am, thank you. I think I got dropped off at the same time that Gary couldn't hear the audio or I guess everybody. Then I never got back in, but I'm glad to hear it wasn't a conspiracy against me. I was just going to add on the CTE audit, I agree with Director Constam, I think we've made like tremendous progress. And I think the trend line is the right one. And so it's not that it wouldn't, there wouldn't be value in the audit, it's just maybe not not now. And I also think there's some higher value potential audits that have been listed other than the CTE audits, so just wanted to add that.
And we just got Roseanne to agree and Vice Chair Scott to agree to a board work session on it, so we're going to start there.
So there's other offerings here. I want to make sure and mention some of these that have been talking to me, talking to me about some other offering or other audit topics. But the ones listed in yellow are, I don't know, acknowledged, they have represented to me and I just seem to more, I don't quite see an audit objective for these topics. Yes, I will continue to research them and get back to those who suggested the audit and make sure I have a better understanding so I can better see what an audit might be, but I'm not there yet for those. So if you liked those topics or perhaps you were the one that recommended the topic, we can talk more about it later. So in the orange there, these three topics have come up multiple years. So they were presented, the support system, the support system for principals was presented two years ago and we passed, then last year we passed and this year. This year we had the equity audit and it was just issued in October, so just two months ago. And the district emailed out an F D A in combination with the equity audit results. And explained that they are working to do an action plan to address some of the issues identified in the equity audit. And I really think that any potential audit of these three topics would have a little bit of duplication of members. Not exactly, but the equity audit really identifies some very specific issues that this, you know, that might be part of what an audit would identify. So I would rather reconsider this after the action plan for the equity audit is created by the district administration. I will take a look at it and then I'll come back and, you know, we can talk about this one again next year. But I really think that there would be a lot of value of waiting till we see the action plan.
Do you know when we're expecting that or is there a timeline on that?
There wasn't one, but, and I forgot to ask, I was, yeah, I'm so sorry, I forgot to ask. But it did say that they have, the district has contracted with leadership to help with the action plan, so.
Response to the equity audit?
Yes.
Action plan?
Yes, I know, but it's not ready yet. But I can tell them.
Okay, I agree with your reasoning there, so we'll just keep it, keep it on that.
Okay, so the next one there, one audit that was requested was an audit of unrepresented employee compensation and benefits. And I am, I fall in that category, so I would respectfully say that I have a conflict of interest to do this audit. But I really can't even consider it. If the board would like this audit, we would have to contract out for it. Like, it's just a conflict of interest, the government won't let me do this audit. Any questions about that one or do you want to move on?
I mean, I guess I'd just be curious here whether anyone thinks that's a topic worth auditing. I'm a little surprised to find it on the list.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Director Scott, what was, what would be the purpose of of that audit?
I don't know, we have market surveys.
So I I could speak to that. So currently, the board is removing some of its level of oversight. And so in other, in other local jurisdictions of similar sizes or of a similar budget size, they would have a, like a layer of accountability and oversight through, you know, an independent auditor. Obviously, we don't have that unlike some of the local jurisdictions. So as as the board moves away from oversight of the benefits and other things that are provided to non-represented employees, it would provide a layer of just oversight that is not happening at the at the board level.
So I'll just respond to that. I I think that's a really gross mischaracterization of what the board is doing. And I just want to start being really clear about that in 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 response. We are not removing our level of oversight. What we're actually doing is just more appropriate governance and allowing these decisions, these operational decisions to be made by the superintendent. I want to be really clear that the policy we passed, which I know you oppose Director Medwards, but the policy we passed has those salary schedule or vacation schedules being posted every year, so there's incredible transparency. And the board, at any time, the board, when, and I think it's part of our job to to review those as they're posted, could potentially take action if we felt like it was needed. So I I think this feels a little bit more like a topic that was suggested because a policy outcome didn't really come the way you wanted it to. And so I just, I actually think that's a really inappropriate use. I don't have any issue auditing this if in fact there are reasons to do so. I would go back to our policy on district auditing. I mean, it specifically refers to, you know, is there potential for cost savings and service improvements? Is there a level of public and school board interest? Is there evidence of problems, of wrongdoing, risk of loss or abuse, availability of audits? I mean, if 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 those things are are true, if if we think that we're we're off in terms of benchmarks or we think that that the district is doing something inappropriate, then by all means, let's let's potentially take another look at that. I'm not aware of those issues and I guess that's what I would want to see first before moving forward with this type of audit.
All right, thank you.
I just have, this is just a thought for me, for me, and I didn't know about the whole this audit piece. But I guess my one question is, is this, any of these things that we're going to be auditing? What, I guess my question would be, what is the? What would be the, well, how to say this? With any of these audits, is there correlation to the academic achievement of our kids? That would be one of my questions with any of these audits. Because as we seen yes, yesterday, therefore yesterday, that that really needs to be a focus. And if that really needs to be a focus, everything that we do from the audit committee to the facilities operation committees to the charter committee should be children achievement focused. And if there's something that's not children achievement focused or we, or the, or the conversation can't come back to how this is directly affecting our kids and their achievement, then we need to really take a hard look at whenever that that issue or agenda item is. Thank you.
Gary, this is Amy. I I could not agree with you more. And as Janice knows, because when we sat down at the beginning of the year and talked about, you know, audit topics, I said that, you know, my goal with this committee is to really shift the focus from operational issues to issues of equitable access and student achievement. And I think the hardship transfer audit that was already approved really speaks to equitable access. There are a lot of, lot of issues there that, you know, people have raised concern about for a while. I think the ESL audit absolutely speaks to student achievement. One of our student groups that continue, has for for many, many years. I'm just going to say not been especially well-served and not getting. I'm just gonna say not been especially well served and not getting great results. And so, um. I completely agree with you. There are times, you know, when things come up that, uh. Where it's sort of unarguable that there should be some kind of a review, like the ACH processes. That was a fairly, um, straightforward audit that didn't take too long. Um, same with the PPR audit, uh, it's, you know, not the, not the most lofty. Topic to delve into, but it was something that was raised in the Secretary of State's audit. And it was frankly, an area that, uh. You know, didn't have the kind of oversight that it should have had a few years ago. So. Those are behind us and I think just as a general. Rule, I think we're all pretty much on the same page for the audit committee that we want to use this resource. In ways that'll really make a difference for our kids, so.
Can I, um, just throw one thing out for you? I care here, Dr. Hollins and Dr. Constam and all the other directors and. Um, I really just want to be. Clear about why you don't find. An overwhelming amount of audits suggested in that category. It is because. I am worried that the data associated with anything that I audit right now. Will not be. Um, so for the last year, any data that I would use may not be representative of what. We could expect because we worked or.
Right.
Um, hybrid at, or, or at home learning. And so my problem with trying to do anything. That would involve student outcome related data right now. Is I would need to go either pre-pandemic to get data, which would not, I mean, it's. Not be timely, you know, it, it's not totally representative of what we could expect before. Or if I use the data in the last year. It may not necessarily, so for me right now, it's extremely difficult to. Do an audit that would. Need student outcome related data. Right now, but I hear what you're saying and so.
Do you feel that specifically about the English language learner?
No.
Yeah, because that's about, a lot about inputs as well.
I think the ESL and the CTE offerings are both things that would be. Not student outcome related data, um, reliant. I wouldn't need that as an input to be on.
So, so I guess I'm gonna, I'm just saying to your point, um. Talking about the student outcome data is important. I actually think Director Hollins' point was broader than that. That we should be focusing on things that impact student achievement, which includes the things that, that are on here, right? Being with, with learning the CTE. So even if it's not specifically dealing with. Even data, which you like, there's a little bit of a challenge. Even looking at those processes, the systems, the programs. Um, on a qualitative basis is going to have a potential positive impact.
Well, that's what I can do now.
That's exact, that's exactly, I concur with that.
So I think, uh. I think, um, it's good for us to keep a running list and it's good for us to keep in touch with. Um, you know, everyone on the board, community, students. I want to ask you before we move on from this, if you guys have any, uh, ideas, because I'm not sure if you've talked to Janice. Um, but I think, uh, what we're looking at as far as reporting out to the board is the two. Audits that we already have on deck that are about to be underway. And, and recommending, uh, audit on our English language learners and how we are serving them. And leaving it at that for our scope of work until we revisit, uh, at the end of the fiscal year to create a new, uh. A new plan for next year.
Okay, would you please give me just a few more minutes because. I have a community member who has reached out to me and requested an audit and I have promised to, like, talk about it here. So in the future audit considerations, I want to make sure and acknowledge that the implementation of the GDC, the guaranteed and viable curriculum. Um, has been presented as a potential audit topic. And it is not in a, um, I'm not proposing it at this time. I could, if you guys pick it, I can do it. But I saw a draft version of the Secretary of State's audit report, follow-up report. And there are two, there is a, a section specifically related to this topic. And so. You already have, it's coming, it's still in draft right now, but I have seen it, so I know what the draft is and I would rather. Um, if another audit team, Secretary of State has looked at it and has formed a conclusion. It would really make sense to not try to. Redo that at this point. It makes sense, um, to let that be and, and see how the district responds to that conclusion. Um, but I want to be responsive to people who have talked to me about auditing because I love it and I appreciate. Everybody who shares all these ideas with me. And I want to make sure, and two years, he's been reminding me to. Bring it up. So no, seriously, like, I want to make sure and, and be responsive to that. And I really do appreciate it. While I wouldn't recommend it right now. I want to keep it on my list for consideration in the future.
And I've also reached out to Mr. Cruz to just get a better understanding of, um. You know, what issues he's concerned about, what, what he's trying to get at, um, there.
And, and I, I wonder if there's a, I mean, you're talking with the community, which I haven't, if there's a question about whether it's right. Because again, the GDC implementation is happening, you know, the. There's going to be as part of the strategic plan, there's going to be some metrics around, you know, how it's being implemented. You know, we can certainly audit things as they're being, that is, you know, something you could do in performance auditing. But often the most effective performance audits are sort of after you've had some time to see whether it's having an effect. So there may be value there too. And, and maybe even pointing a community member towards some of the things in the strategic plan. That, that may be interesting to, to, to them.
Yeah, for sure. Um, uh, did you have a chance to, Zanny, you're, are you guys both on reps on this committee?
Yes.
Yes.
So did you guys have a chance to talk about audit topics or anything?
Um, we have not, um, I, Janice has reached out, um. I failed to email back, so that is entirely my fault.
It happens, it happens. I, I got you, we got the members connected tonight, so we will be talking soon. You know, what I think would be especially helpful is if you can reach out to these guys about the, um, student body funds audit.
Say, that, that seems interesting.
And, uh, just, I, I, I would value their input on the scope for that and.
Do a scoping of, and then make sure I get into that, but I also schedule a meeting to get.
And, and also, um.
So I might ask you guys to be sort of our primary liaisons for that in particular, if you would.
I, I'd love to do that. Um, if it's of any interest, um, I've ranked my top five audit topics. Um, I personally would like to see.
Let's hear it.
Um, okay, so number one is support systems for principals. Um, I think that's a very, uh, time, time sensitive one, but also very pertinent to our current situation. Um, I know that it's been a particularly taxing year for everyone. That's just one, one tier of support. Um, and then number two is teacher, school, building, administrative retention. Um, again, sort of similar thing, uh, that's been, it's been a struggle. Three is CTE offerings. Um, four is, um, so the youth aid waiver, that's sort of a future one. Um, and then five is also a future one, it's the complaint processes. Um, I know that we've had discussions about that in the past, but I think, um, an audit would be sort of beneficial to, to flesh out some of those.
What was your second one after support for principals?
Uh, it was teacher and school building administrator retention.
Okay.
Um, and if it's all, if it is at all possible, um, adding. Um. Uh, bus drivers specifically, that has been a struggle. I know I've made big, big leaps. Uh, I had a, a meeting with Claire. Um, she should have explained to me how, well, she explained to me the progress that's been made in that area. And how we're retaining them. Um, but I can get some other area that is, um, very visible. Um, to the public and very visible to our families, I think. Be learning how we can, um, or, you know, looking into how we can retain them. Um, and what's worked, I think enormously beneficial.
Okay, Lander?
Um, the, the teacher and school building administrator retention, uh, was high on my list. The CTE offerings, uh, two, let's see. The, the school support principal, um, is also interesting. That was another, I mean, they all are. Okay, I can see why there's a need and not a need for some of them and all of them, but, uh, those three in particular.
Roseanne, making sure we do that, when we do that CTE work session, that these guys get noticed on it.
Uh, one thing I'll say about the support system for principals and then the school and building administrator retention. I'm gonna follow up with you to the meeting and I will go to that really obviously and why I think. That it could duplicate, um, some efforts. And after I explain it, she'll have to, like, still feel the same way, which is awesome, but I would like to know if you can bring it to the. Do that and let you see my rationale for why I kind of categorized it that way.
Yeah, and, and my choices are based off of either the very little skimmed information or my, um, perception at this moment.
Yeah, it's mine, it's perception also, so. I agree with it.
Gary and Juliette, are you with us?
No.
Oh, okay. Uh, anything else for the good of the order? I, I want to circle back to what Janice said about the Secretary of State's audit, so they have, uh, corresponded with us about. Um, following up, they did their, um. They did their last pass on our, uh, responses to some of the original concerns. Now we're going to meet with them. And go through, uh. You know, where they still, some of the things they say, this has been fully implemented, some they say this has been partially implemented. And then there's a few where they still feel like they don't. See, uh, evidence of progress on things they pulled out. It's a little tricky because some of the things they pulled out, we don't necessarily agree with. Some of those fall in earshot. But, uh, I'll, uh, as soon as the staff response is done, I'll send that to you guys and, uh. And just let you know about when we meet with them and how that goes down.
So we don't, we don't have that in our box that you have to drag to that.
I don't think Claire sent it to everyone.
That's right.
I'm an inside source.
Their, their, their draft back to us, I don't believe so. I can send it to you.
No, it's, I mean, I, I'm happy to wait for the staff response. I guess I'm just, I'm going back to some of the conversations we had, I was a year ago. I, I just want to make sure that we, as a district, are not hesitant about telling them where we disagree.
Yeah.
And I got the feeling, again, it was before I was on the board, I got the feeling the first time around, there was some hesitancy, that there were things that we as a district disagreed with, but we didn't politically want to say that. And my position a year ago was no, if we disagree with it, we need to tell them we disagree. And if we're not implementing, we need to tell them we're not implementing it. Um, and not be afraid of that, because that's actually what the audit process is supposed to be about. I just want to make sure.
I don't know how engaged you have been in that, but there's.
Claire's been breaking me in pieces. I, I don't know the whole context, but I'm piecing it together.
There's a couple that have to do with, um. Transparency in the budgets, uh, documents that they still have issue with. And specifically, uh, they would like to see more evidence of, uh, inputs. Related to, uh. Performance metrics. They would like to see those connections made more clearly in the budget.
Benchmarking.
Benchmarking, exactly. Yeah, yeah. So anyway. Um, do we have anybody for public testimony?
No.
Uh, okay, anything else for the good of the order?
To clarify, you want me to move forward with the ESL, so that we're moving forward with the ESL, we're picking one audit?
To, to the board.
To the board, right, so the, it's the will of the audit committee to submit the ESL audit, ask for quotes. To the board with full approval, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
And we vote on that, right?
You do, um.
Yeah.
Is there a need to get it on Tuesday or could it go in?
No, no.
No rush, uh, but I will send that to you in the same format that I did on here. Uh, so whenever it gets on the release, this in conclusion, you won't be able to still find the ESL audit.
Yeah, we get it. We got two more on deck. No more than, okay, thank you guys.